Good evening, and I want to call this meeting of the Joint School Committees of Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and the Regional School Committee to order. This is being conducted remotely with the consent of Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the COVID restrictions on open meetings. This is February 9th, the time we're calling the order is 6:32. For this meeting, we are convening via video conference on Zoom. The Zoom link was posted on our regional website, which you could access as well as the agenda. For this Zoom meeting, please note that it is being recorded and that some attendees are participating, all of us actually, by video conference. And accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer, and anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We will have community comments at the beginning of this meeting, and it's an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We request that you make your comments brief and that you just move the discussion forward by adding any new information that you may have. If it's something that's been previously stated, please note that we are taking it into consideration. That being said, community comments are just what they state they are. They're an opportunity for us to listen to the members of the community. It is not a forum where we will answer questions or engage in a dialogue or debate. And once the public comment section has been concluded, we'll move on to the business on the agenda. And unsolicited comments from the community at large are no longer permitted. We will simply use that time to use comments from our committees. So with that being said, we will have meeting etiquette where I will state the agenda and then call on those to proceed with the order of the agenda. So with that being said, is there anyone who has a community comment? And I will ask Maggie and Judy and Leslie to help me look to see. And you can either raise your hands on the side or on your screen.
The easiest if you use the hand raise because there's so many screens.
There are so many screens.
Which can be found in the reactions.
Right, down at the bottom of your toolbar. Does anyone, Judy or Maggie or Leslie?
I don't see any, I don't see anyone.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay, so that being the case, and I'm going to move.
Sorry, I put a thumbs up.
Sorry, sorry, that's okay, Amy. Say your name and like what town so that we'll know where you're from.
Yep, this is Ami to Johnny. I'm at Dover. I've got kids at Chicory. So I appreciated hearing at one of the last meetings that it's less about, the reopening is less about numbers because I think there was a concern of increasing numbers and more about spread and that there hadn't been spread in the schools to date. So I was just curious, is that still the case that there hasn't been spread in schools? If not, great. If so, just curious what that means moving forward.
I think as Dr. Kio does his presentation, we'll probably get those answers as to the affordability.
Great.
Are there any more comments? Thank you, Ami.
I don't see any.
Okay, all right, so that is the case. I'm going to close the comment section. And I'm going to move to turning this over to Dr. Kio with the proposed next stages of the reopening.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Can everyone hear me? I hope.
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. I see we have a lot of people here, which is really fantastic. And I have to say, it's one of the wiser things we've done through this process. It's just let people know we're having these meetings so that they can come and hear what's happening. So I'm going to share my screen. If you just, I need Dawn to give me permission. Okay, so, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this presentation regarding further reopening of the Dover Sherburne schools. As we all know, the past 11 months have been as challenging as any ever faced by our school system. It's truly been a year like no other. With the onset of the pandemic, we were called upon to adapt on the fly to never changing set of demands from the state and federal government and to begin operating our schools in a way never considered before. It was a big ask, and there was a great deal of uncertainty. Nevertheless, we went to work and immediately began tackling the issues. But it seemed that just as we began to zero in on a model or approach that would work for us, we would learn that we needed to change yet again due to new guidance from CDC, DPH, DECE, or the governor. The frustration levels have been high, but in traditional Dover Sherburne fashion, we faced the challenges one by one and brought our students back to school this past September 15th. A few of us at the time thought we would be able to remain in school beyond November, even in a hybrid model. However, somehow we managed the unthinkable, even bringing our K-5 students in four days a week. Our accomplishments have been impressive and we should be proud. However, for the sake of our students, we cannot stop moving forward. Young people of Dover and Sherburne depend, and Boston, depend on seeing each other and their teachers for socialization, support, and valuable learning.
There's no socialization on you, I hope.
And we must do everything in our power to expand those opportunities wherever possible. As such, tonight, I'd like to share what I believe are the next most realistic steps we should be taking to move forward with our reopening. I would also like to highlight some of the significant challenges we'll face in doing so and some of the measures we are taking to make our schools even safer. So let's begin with the challenges. Logistics, I use this term a lot when discussing our current situation and especially when talking about expanded in-person learning. Because of the critical importance of social distancing, space has become our most valuable commodity this year. In order to fit full classrooms of students at the agreed-upon five-and-a-half feet of distancing, bookcases, teacher desks, laptop carts, science tables, innovative furniture, and file cabinets had to be moved out of classrooms and into vacant spaces, of which there were few. Likewise, because of required distancing and one-direction seating during lunch, we've had to expand into other areas to ensure that everyone could fit. This was less of an issue in the fall because the weather cooperated, but in the winter months, it's meant being creative and developing some interesting alternatives. It would not be unusual, for example, to visit any one of our schools during lunch periods and find students spreading onto our stages, into our auditoriums and gyms, or even into lobbies and hallways. This has been far from ideal, but these are some of the sacrifices that we've had to make in order to bring our students back in during the pandemic. So let's take a closer look at some of these. So you can see over here, our chickering students all facing the same direction. You obviously can't use the tables you'd like, the way you'd like to. You can see up on the stage, we've got seating up there. You can see a vacant space that's just been, we've moved furniture into there in order to, again, to keep the desks away from each other. We've had to pull up the rugs that the kids sit on because that's not happening anymore. At Pine Hill, we've moved a classroom into the library. That, I believe, is a first. Our traveling specialists here, you can see, are moving around on carts. Kindergarten, when's the last time you saw a kindergarten classroom with students sitting in rows at desks? Obviously, the cafeteria seating, and I'm sorry about the distortion of some of these pictures, the cafeteria seating in rows facing the same directions, and then the auditorium being used for both storage and lunch. These are some of the challenges. You can see the kids are, look like they're ready for recess, probably because they have to go to lunch ready for recess. There's a lot of things we've had to do to just adapt. Over in the middle school, you can see what we've had to do in order to provide more seating for lunch. This was never imagined. This conglomeration of pictures is from some of our interior classrooms where those tables up at the top there from the science rooms, those are slate top tables. They're very, very heavy to move.
I'm trying to, just a minute.
So there's a lot of extra furnishings that have gathered into these spaces that we have to clear out. And I'm not saying that we can't do this. I'm just pointing out that this is something that has to be dealt with. You can see some pictures from the high school. This is the typical spillover into the lobbies during lunch. The spacing challenges are obviously huge in the cafeteria. I've said it before, at the region, we can fit 60 students in the cafeteria at a time. So if we have roughly 600 students in each building, just do the math, it's a big problem. And then the clearing of interior classrooms at high school is going to need to take place too because those rooms have not been used. Because again, we've only been bringing in half the schools, half the school population, half the staff, half the students, two days a week at the region. And the reason we've been able to do that as well as we have is because our teachers have done an amazing job at teaching synchronously. So if you listen to people in surrounding communities, many of them have students who attend school for two days in person, and the other two days of the four that they're in school, technically in school, two are in person, the other two are actually asynchronous. So the kids see their teacher for about 20 minutes in the morning, and then they get their assignments for the day, and that's the extent of their teaching on those other two days. So, you know, we've come a long way. And so we know that we're going to have to make some changes and do some obvious work in order to move forward. But there's some other things that we think we can do to keep our students safe and our staff safe as we consider more in-person learning. So our medical consultants, many of whom are on tonight from the Health and Hygiene Committee and local boards of health, frequently talk to us about having layers of protection in our fight against the coronavirus. We traditionally think of masking, frequent hand washing, staying home when symptomatic, and social distancing as our protective layers. However, we believe there are other steps we can take that will bring us much closer to being safe for further in-person learning experiences. These include pool testing and, of course, vaccinations. As most people know, the state of Massachusetts began offering free pool testing for a limited time, and at Dover Sherburne, we've been investigating the program and its feasibility for our system. We've consulted our health and hygiene specialists and with their encouragement surveyed our staff and families. And although the percentages expressing interest seemed lower than we had hoped, because we were hoping for 70% to 80% participation, we're confident that others can be convinced of its importance and will sign up when they consider their consent forms, which went out yesterday. Pool testing is most effective when we see as many staff and students participating as possible, as it covers the largest segment of the population and thus is more thorough. So we ask our staff and families from the middle school and high school to please join us in signing up. For our initial rollout of this, we are looking at the middle school and high school staff and students. We do anticipate the possibility of doing it further with the elementary-age students, but, you know, keep in mind that adults coming towards these younger students with swabs to stick up their noses is not a really popular thing with the children, and we really don't want to traumatize the little kids. So we're not there yet. Fortunately, the infection rates and serious health concerns of the younger students have proven to be less of a factor in this pandemic. And so we, although we do want to keep that door open for pool testing at the elementary level, we're starting out, at least initially, with the secondary level of middle school and high school. Thanks to our established relationship with AFC Urgent Care, we've already begun vaccinations of eligible staff, nurses, mental health workers, staff over 75 years of age, and some of our bus drivers have already been vaccinated. We are, or have, I should say, compiled lists of staff who would be eligible for the 65 and over vaccinations and have also compiled lists of any interested K-12 staff so that when the state opens these phases up, we'll be ready to send individuals for their shots without a long delay or layover. Obviously, this is, it's a voluntary thing. No one has to participate. Most people are very happy to do so. We do plan to stagger those people and the names that we send forward so that we don't lose half of a school because they're having a negative reaction the day after a shot, particularly the second dose of the vaccine from Moderna, which is the one that AFC's been giving us. So we're feeling pretty good about this. Unfortunately, the 75 and older group that is still currently being vaccinated is only about 50% there. We had hoped that they would be closer to done by the end of this week, and then the 65 and overs could go hopefully for a week or so. And then I would imagine that the teachers would be coming up next. So we don't have an exact date on that, but that's why those, having those lists ready is everything, because we could just get the call that, and the governor's given us a stamp of approval, and off we go. So knowing that we'll be broadening our layers of protection through vaccinations and pool testing, and that preparing our facilities for increased student learning will take time and will benefit from warmer weather, I'm proposing the following timeline for the next phases of reopening. So under this plan, the middle school would return to four days a week in-person instruction starting on Monday, March 22nd. Elementary schools would return to five days a week in-person instruction on Wednesday, March 24th. So a couple of days later from the middle school kids, you'll note the asterisks. The elementary students we're proposing will have a remote half-day every other Wednesday in order to allow for professional development and specialized support services to continue. That number's probably six Wednesdays between now and the end, or between then and the end of the year. So obviously, there's some important considerations moving forward. We need the Board of Health's support and final approval of this plan. We need to pay attention to rates of infections, increases to the rates of infections perhaps from this variant from overseas. These different variants could be factors, and we just have to monitor that and count on the Health and Hygiene Committee and our Boards of Health to give us guidance in that regard. But I would imagine if we saw a significant surge, we would have to pull back. Some of the logistical challenges may require temporary changes to some of our policies at the region. I'll give you an example. Adding junior privileges to reduce crowding during lunches might be something that the Regional Committee might want to consider. We do have meetings between now and then, so we'll bring something forward that would list those kinds of suggestions. Until all students can be vaccinated, we will still be monitoring infection rates and be offering remote learning as an option to all students. And finally, upon receiving vaccinations, all staff will be asked to return to in-person instruction. So it's important for us as a system to start thinking about the future of DS. We can't just allow what happened to us last year in March when we just got this big challenge dropped on us to happen again. We want to think, we want to be forward-thinking about the fall. And we're lucky, we're so lucky in Dover and Sherburne that we have the private citizens who've helped us along the way, our Health and Hygiene Committee, those folks are here today. We could never, we absolutely could never have done what we've done without them, and they are very thoughtful and helpful to us in terms of thinking about what's happening out there and what we can expect. So we get our suggestions from them when it comes to a sense of the timelines for vaccinations and obviously our data regarding our rates in town. So, but our goal is obviously to come back as fully in-person as possible in September. And with that in mind, we really need to start adjusting and planning for that kind of change. I do want to just take this opportunity while I have 200-plus people listening, that what we're talking about with our safety protocols is really a social contract. You know, we're counting on each other to be safe so that we don't put others at risk. Our system's worked because people have largely honored our safety protocols of masking, distancing, not coming to school when symptomatic, and honoring state gathering sizes. And importantly, with February vacation coming, travel mandates. If we're to move forward with these plans, we must continue to adhere to these requirements. So with that, I will open it up to questions from our committee members, and I will do my best to answer them as thoroughly as I can. As I said, we have some excellent folks from the Health and Hygiene Committee with us tonight who can also chime in.
And Dr. Kio, just, I think it might run a little more streamlined if maybe we did questions per committee so that you're not bouncing everywhere, maybe start with Dover, then you can go to region and then to Sherburne. We'll just do an alphabetical order.
That sounds great.
Yeah. So Leslie, I'll let you look to your committee, see if any of them have questions. You can call on them, and then we'll move to region and then to Sherburne. Sarah, go ahead.
Dr. Kio, I note that this Tijani made a, asked a question at the beginning of the session that I do think is worth kind of examining, and that is just to kind of double-check the question about spread in schools. Are you or our colleagues at the Board of Health able to comment on that?
I will definitely tell you what I know, and that is, in fact, that we have had one instance in our system of in-school transmission. And I don't think, I mean, I'll let our Board of Health folks speak for themselves. I don't think any of us thought that we would actually get through the year without any. We hoped we would not see any, but I do know of one instance where there was in-school transmission of one case to another person, and not from one person to 30 different people or 40 or 50 different people, but one case of one person to another person.
Andrew, is it okay if I just kind of walk through the process?
Yes, of course. Now, you might want to introduce yourself to those who do not know you.
Sure, so my name's Matt Vitale. I'm a Sherburne resident, a Pine Hill dad, physician at Brigham Women's on the COVID units, and then Board of Health member for the Sherburne Board of Health. And it gets tricky in terms of what we can share in terms of information that may be protected, individual health information. So I think by walking through the process of what we did to investigate the case, hopefully we'll address the concern behind the question. So in this case, we had an index case with a couple of close contacts. There was a close contact that was positive. That then triggered Jo reaching out to those of us who kind of helped work and support. She reached out to board members from both towns, although the jurisdiction falls with the single Board of Health, but we continue to work collaboratively for consistent policy across the district. We then did a deep dive with the close contact in terms of whether there are any other risk factors or were we relatively confident transmission occurred within school. We then did a dive looking at the different protocols that were in place to mitigate risk and looked at the ventilation data from the school to identify whether there are any local risk factors that could be generalized in other areas. I think what we identified in that deep dive was there were, like violation isn't the right word, but there were protocols that are in place that were not followed, I think in a good faith, thoughtful effort, but that piece, I think, was a risk factor. We didn't identify any generalizable risk factor that would apply to other classroom environments, social structures, other schools or other pieces that seem specific to this instance. So we then rendered a judgment that said this didn't look like a category of risk but was a specific set of circumstances and made that determination, provided guidance to the school. And so as we sort of looked at it and did the collective gut check of kind of how worried are you after that one, it felt very specific to the situation. I think our level of shared worry about a generalizable pattern of risk was low, but that's sort of what we did within two hours of finding out about the case. That was the follow-up. That was the pattern, and I think that's how we would anticipate approaching any case where there's a question of spread. In terms of other things we've done in the past where there's been questions, there have been other instances that we didn't feel necessary in this case, that we reached out to the epidemiologists at the state to view the circumstances of a case and to get guidance about whether mobile testing was indicated and whether there was concern about a cluster. So we sort of have both local resources and then state-level resources we can use. But again, in this case, as we looked at that, this felt very situational and not structural or systematic.
I don't know if that's helpful to you, Sarah. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Andrew, could I just ask you to show us that slide again with the dates and/or tell us the dates again? Because I know for myself, it popped up really quickly. I'm sure other people would like to lay their eyes on it again.
Absolutely. Hang on for one second. Just have to go to screen share. So if I could just add, are you able to see that, Leslie?
Yes, we can see that.
Okay, if I could just add some of the thinking that went into this. What I was trying, what I was trying to do was match up what we believe will be our pool testing, our vaccinations, and our post-Febuary vacation question marks. We felt like that's when most of those layers of protection, as I mentioned before, the pool testing and the vaccination should really be in place or started by then. Matt, if you don't mind my putting you or other Health and Hygiene Committee members on the spot, I've heard varying figures with regard to the level of protection that one is given with just one shot.
Sure. So I think that, as with all things COVID, we're learning new things every day. What we know is, in terms of the studies, where you get that 95% effectiveness that they described from Moderna and Pfizer, that's after the second dose. But when you start to look at where do the two lines diverge, so when do you start to see a difference in the patterns of symptomatic infection between the people who got vaccine and people who got the placebo? It's about 12 days after the first dose. So I wouldn't totally hang my hat on that in all regards. You know, we sort of say, follow what the study said. But I think certainly when I got my own vaccine, when did I start to feel a little bit more peace of mind? For me, it was day 13. And I think that that sense has been validated out of some health insurance data at Israel as well, where we certainly think that people need both shots. Getting both shots is very important. But there's a benefit trend that we see even after the first dose, that's about, you know, 10 to 14 days after the first dose, there's likely some benefit, even if it's not the full benefit that people receive after the second dose.
Right, so that's an important piece. I appreciate you spelling that out. That's an important piece because, you know, no one has a crystal ball. I don't know when we're going to have the vaccinations available, but if we could have a sense that at least our staff would be initially vaccinated, I think I'd feel a lot better towards moving forward with this. By the way, I don't believe that we are fully dependent on the vaccinations and the pool testing. I just see them as other layers of protection. We've done really, really well as a school system in terms of responding to those cases that are. We've done really, really well as a school system in terms of, uh, responding to, uh, those who, uh, those cases that have come up and with the contact tracing. It's really hard for people to receive that phone call. I'm sure that, you know, that their child's consider, or that they are considered a close contact. There's a whole series of kind of anxiety, anxious questions that go through someone's head. But the, our nurses and administrators at times have done an amazing job of really tracking these things down fast. And, um, and making sure that those who are symptomatic go and get tested right away and that they get PCR tested so that we get a very, very quick, uh, result. These, these measures have really made a difference. I just, I am, uh, concerned that as we move up in the schools, our students are bigger. They're bigger kids. And when they get to high school, they're, are, they're adults. The kids move from class to class. There are the, the challenges that I mentioned with lunch and, um, it, it's, I would feel better knowing that those other layers of protection were in place. And that's why we're targeting the dates that we're targeting.
Our school committee members, do you have any further questions?
Uh, yes, please.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. Uh, thank you, Dr. Kio. And I was wondering, since more and more towns are adopting pool testing, is there a space for sharing kind of insight learned through that data or strategies for even rolling it out within a district? I know Wellesley's done it for quite a while and maybe Lexington recently began.
Yes, definitely. And, uh, um, I don't know if, uh, if Kate McCarthy, our director of student services is on tonight. I can't see all with all the, the faces out there. But I can tell you that Kate has taken a lead on this. As in fact, uh, reached out to other school systems to learn what she can about this. We have made the decision, we, we, I admit, we were, um, I personally, as the superintendent was waffling a bit on this. And the reason I was waffling on it is because I, I, it is a lot of work to do. It's a lot of work. If you come up in a positive pool, you know, that's, that's a, uh, you know, a challenge for the, the people in that positive pool. They have to come back and, and do the antigen testing and there's just a series of steps that have to take place. It does mean we're going to hire someone to, to initiate this. But we have, we have taken a lot of ideas from people who've done it. And I guess what I was concerned about was that, you know, if, if, um, if you miss someone, um, or the, if, excuse me, the antigen testing, uh, the, you know, the, the, the pool of tests of samples go into a PCR test. But if that PCR test comes back positive, then all of those people then have to get another test. And the other test traditionally hasn't been, um, considered as, uh, reliable as the PCR test. But I've become convinced by the, um, by doctors Vitaly and Beavers and Peterson that, um, and Bedrow that it is worth doing. And, uh, Matt, maybe you can talk about how it's used in the hospitals. Uh, because that's another place, Mark, where we're getting our guidance from, from Matt, uh, because they've been doing it for a while, the pool testing, uh, in the hospitals. Is that right, Matt?
Uh, so I tweaked it a little bit, um, but that, so I think there's sort of three kinds of testing to think about. There's diagnostic testing, which is what we've done in the district so far, which is if your staff member has symptoms consistent with COVID, they get the molecular tested AFC or PCR test in the community. And we figure out whether or not they have COVID based on that result. The next idea would be surveillance testing, which is not, uh, which was the modeling that was considered earlier and that we were less enthusiastic about, which is where you take a small subset of the district and sample them, the sort of the canary in the coal mine for one of the patterns we see there. I think that the pool testing is, it's being promoted or kind of being promoted by the state and adopted by us is essentially a version of screening. It's a little bit different than the screening we do in the hospital. So for example, my hospital, every patient who's admitted gets a PCR. People can not get it because they've got severe dementia or other behavioral or surgical issues that make them unable to get the test. But you get pretty close to a hundred percent. So for us, if we have sampling, that's about 60% or 50%, we're probably somewhere between surveillance and screening. And so I think that what the pool test brings us is it will find cases that we would have missed without pooled testing. But we shouldn't be under the illusion that it will find all cases. Because one, we're not testing all people and two, we're not testing every day. So I think as Dr. Kio said, it's adding a layer of protection. But I think the other important message for families is this is not, my kid got tested, we can go see Nana. You know, I can do other pieces or it's totally fine for them to do X, Y, and Z because everybody was tested on Monday. This is an added layer, but it doesn't help us take on more interpersonal risk and we shouldn't peel off a layer of protection based on having the availability of this testing. Think the other thing I would highlight is if this testing is doing its job, or if it's, let me put it another way. If the testing works well, I would expect us to have a higher case count than if we didn't do testing at all. Because we're finding asymptomatic people or pre-symptomatic people that we would never find now. And so I think it's important as we look at this to say, if the testing program works really well and the level of disease in the community stays exactly the same, we will still get more emails about cases found in the school because we'll be finding kids who are asymptomatic that we wouldn't have identified now. And so I think that for parents, it's important to say, we're finding cases to reduce the risk of transmission between students and staff. We believe that risk to be low, but we want to make it as close to zero as we're able to make it with the tools available to us. But if we're effective, then we will find cases that we wouldn't find in our current testing method, which is really just the diagnostic testing. And so people need to get their head around the fact that, you know, we may hear more from the district about positive cases and we may find more close contacts. The hope is that the benefit that provides outweighs the disruption that it introduces. I think our sense is that we think it does. But again, tailoring that to the level of learner is part of the rationale. And then also thinking of the logistics of the program, having people who can, uh, like my kids are amazing at having stuff end up in their nose, but that's not true for all kiddos. And so for the middle school and high school where people can self-collect the samples, that has significant impacts in terms of the amount of PPE we need to be able to obtain. And the staffing that's necessary to get the program off the ground and running. It also aligns with where we see in general in the population level, higher rates of, um, infection, both, uh, regionally and nationally. And it came out, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Or Lexi.
You've summed our discussions really well. Thank you.
I, I, I guess, um, I guess, um, that would be my case in point for how fortunate we've been to have, uh, these doctors helping us. Because they, uh, they really get this. This is their world and they've been such a tremendous advisors to us. So thank you for that, Matt. And, and, uh, Dr. Bedrow, Beavers and Peterson.
Yes, I want a second. I want to thank all the doctors and all the time you guys have spent on this. And on that note, Angie, our committee is all set with our questions.
Okay. I'm going to move to the region next then. Um, Maggie, if you want to see if any of your members have any questions.
Where, um, Andrew, do you mind unsharing your screen? Cause I can't see them and see the screen.
Hmm. I definitely do not.
Oh, great. Okay. Um, do I have questions from members of the region? Kate. And then Lynn.
Thank you. Just trying to find that raise hand button. Um, I am curious. Well, first of all, thank you for this really great thorough, um, information. Um, I am curious if going back to four days a week will change the schedules at all, um, for six through 12. I'm guessing no, since they're with their same cohort students and teachers, but, um, wanted to ask.
Right. That's a really, really, really good question. And, um, my understanding from my conversations with John and Scott is that their schedules would remain for the most part, the same. They're not, for example, going back to 55 minute periods. That is something obviously to be looked at for the fall, but when you have those shorter periods, you have more passing times. And so I think we will probably stay with the same schedule. We also need to be nimble and be able to revert back to a hybrid or even full remote if we needed to. So I, I don't anticipate huge, uh, changes in that regard. I don't know if John or Scott are on at this time.
Yes, I'm on Dr. Kio and you are correct. We are going to maintain our current schedule that already works with, uh, both in-person and remote. We simply would have four days in-person maintaining that same schedule with a Wednesday having chorus and band to start the day and additional extra help sessions throughout the Wednesday session.
Thank you, John. And were there changes, John, to the lunch schedules?
Yeah, yes, that is a good point, Dr. Kio. So right now we have a lunch that goes from 1:05 to 1:50. We would simply split that lunch into two. So we'd have two lunch, lunch waves. Uh, in order to reduce density, we would have the freshmen with the juniors and the sophomores with the seniors. And one of the, um, asks that we would have of the regional school committee would be their consideration to allow for juniors to also sign out during lunch. Right now our seniors have that capability. And by doing that, it would reduce our numbers in the cafeteria greatly. It would actually help us a lot because right now we have freshmen and sophomores who eat lunch together. This would mean really only one full class at the high school and a partial class for kids who decide either they're not leaving or, uh, don't have the opportunity to leave.
Thank you.
And Andrew, um, the middle school will maintain the, its schedule as is essentially. The only exception will be, we would need the other half of our cafeteria to fit all our students for lunches.
Other half of the cafeteria or?
I'm sorry, other, other half of the gymnasium. Right. Which will impact PE.
Right. So that's, uh, a, a further conversation that we would want to have with the region. This, uh, but we're also, you know, as we have throughout this process, trying to factor in all these different moving, um, pieces, we're also factoring in that around April, if you think about it, the weather does start to improve. Uh, and we will see kids being able to get outside, uh, during their free periods and PE classes. The PE classes have been going out now. Uh, it's a little tougher when we have a foot and a half of snow on the ground, but they're still finding ways to get out. Is that right, John and Scott? Yes.
Up until, up until the snow came, yes, they were outside.
Yeah, correct. Safe in the high school.
I don't know if that answers your question, Kate.
Thank you. Yeah, that was great.
Okay. Um, I think next we had Lynn and then I see Michael and then Anne.
Thank you, Maggie. Um, Dr. K, can you walk through again the timing of the opening as it relates to, the educators vaccination schedule, you know, and they have to get, does the opening, how does it relate to the two different vaccination shots? You probably went through this and I didn't process it.
Well, I, I, I didn't go through it in, in detail because I don't know. I mean, it's because I, I just don't know. Again, it's like I was just saying about these moving parts. Initially, when we were drawing this up, I was hearing that it would be a, uh, approximately a two-week window for the over, uh, 65s, basically the 65s and 75s approximately two weeks, which means that the teachers would be up next. Now I'm thinking that that's actually out a week. Uh, but if that were the case, then people could start getting their first sets of vaccines next week over vacation, which would have been ideal really, because then, uh, if there were any side effects, uh, it, it wouldn't take a toll on, uh, attendance. So that would have been the perfect scenario. And then 28 days later, they would, uh, return for their second dose. 28 days is what AFC has been really sticking to pretty well. So it wasn't as concrete as, uh, as I guess you'd like to, uh, you'd hope, uh, it would be. I just, but because I can't. That's why it's so important to us that we have the names all in the queue and ready to go. Because we have, we have had instances of our people who have already been vaccinated, some of whom have already been vaccinated twice. There were occasions when they get the notice the day before. Like, can you come tomorrow? And so, um, and I will say, you know, I can't, uh, I can't say it enough how appreciative I am, uh, of, of AFC. Because, um, I don't know. I honestly do not know of any other districts that has, uh, an arrangement like this. We're not done yet. It hasn't happened yet and it may come completely off the rails, but if it does go forward as we think it will, uh, we're really, really fortunate to have formed this relationship with AFC. And we have the relationship with AFC because remember we pay for five slots a day for PCR testing and have since, um, I believe in November.
Andrew, can I just add one comment to that or two comments?
Absolutely.
Um, you know, so I think for, you know, for the first question of sort of what does vaccine timing look like? I think that is a question that comes up constantly. I think that, uh, I would say the last six weeks have been better by a long shot than the time before that in terms of predictability and clarity. I think that the state is still receiving variable data from the federal government about what their allocation will be. And I know at the system level, our system gets varying data for how much to plan for. And as we, so for example, as we plan our own patient clinics, you sort of want to schedule what you know you're going to get, but there's some, um, there's some uncertainty about what's going to actually come through as a given volume in a given amount of time. So I think we're pretty good about prognosticating a week or so in advance. As we get further than that, it gets much harder to prognosticate based on supply side issues. I would say across the country and certainly in Massachusetts, the rate limiting step right now is primarily vaccine availability and to a lesser extent site availability. Um, so I think that when we get the supply, we'll be able to see it move pretty quickly. I think the other comment I would make, um, and I think it's a solid but important one is, you know, as we kind of thought through this as the health and hygiene group and thought about kind of the go, no-go criteria. I think that the way we thought about vaccines is this is one of the things that is positive, but it didn't feel like the difference between safety and danger in terms of being a considered step. I think each of these provide incremental benefit that we're enthusiastic about. From my standpoint, I think pool testing is a good idea. I think vaccine is enormously beneficial. And so I'm enthusiastic about both. But I'm also grateful for, I think, the incredible work that the district has done, that the teachers have done, that the students and their families have done to mitigate the risk of in-school transmission through adherence to the protocols we have. And I think what we've seen both locally and at the state level is that even with in-person school, the risk of transmission is low. So I don't think for us that pool testing or vaccine was a, you know, sort of go criteria in order to be able to proceed. But it certainly was something we'd say, I think we should do it. The other point I would just echo is like, everybody's tired, but it is especially as we look at our high school students and our middle school students, like I can still pick my boys up. But as we have high school parents and we have high school community, really reinforcing the importance of safe choices and how important this is. I'm much less worried about in-school transmission and I'm much more worried about out-of-school transmission between high school students. And I think that as we get vaccines rolling out and as we get pool testing, I'm really worried that parents are going to say, no, no, you can totally do X, Y, and Z thing that wouldn't have been okay before because your grandma got vaccinated or because you're doing pool testing. And what I would especially encourage our high school students and parents is that, you know, we have, we have only so much risk to spend. I think we should spend it on school and other things that bring meaning. And we just need to hold out for a little while longer in terms of being able to get, um, our older kids vaccine, which will happen before our younger kids can get it. And we just, you know, I think school is where we should spend our energy and our collective risk, although I think that risk is low. And it's so important to maintain diligence outside of school to mitigate the risk of that out-of-school transmission, which I think what we've seen so far is a more common cause of infection in our older kids than anything school related.
So Matt, can I ask you two follow-ups on that? So, a- and, and this is based on our previous conversations with the health and hygiene committee. But when I was here, what I was hearing you folks say is that this should not stop our reopening plan if the vaccination schedule gets thrown off. We should still be able to, uh, uh, stick to this plan. That was question number one.
I, I would say, I think that's true. And at the same time, I would say, I think the district has been really proactive at getting facilitated access to the vaccine. So I don't think it would. So I don't think it would throw off our plan, but I'm also so grateful. We're doing everything we can to expedite because I'd love to see our teachers vaccinated in the first possible moment.
Okay, excellent. And I'm with you. And then uh question two was in September, realistically, even with vaccines being out there and perhaps pretty far along, um, do you anticipate that we will still need these other layers of protection in place, distancing, masking?
I, I, I do, and I'd love to tack uh kind of tap Alexia and her pediatric expertise to inform that too, but my mental structure is I think we're going to have a start of the next school year, but it's going to probably need to look an awful lot like the end of this school year. But Alexia, I'd love your take.
I don't agree any further um anymore than that. Um, remember, um, children eleven, twelve plus are just answering back, are just entering vaccine trials. Um, there's also a scarcity issue um with vaccination leading um healthcare professionals and health policymakers really grappling with who should get the vaccine first. Um, given the disease burden among our younger um students, it's going to be a while before they will be vaccinated. However, the transmission among um school age and middle school children is certainly much less than adults. They still can transmit. We're also going to have a lot of people who um for various reasons will have reservations about getting vaccinated. So it's going to be in the community and we won't be able to um relax on all our protective measures such as socially distancing, wearing our masks, um, washing our hands and um role modeling that for our children of all ages.
And Dr. Bedrow, uh, I know that you're uh tapped into uh the uh pediatrician circles. Uh, there is, there is a, an urgency to get the kids back. Is that correct from your perspective?
Um, from a pediatric, from a strictly pediatric perspective, um, I, I have to say yes because of the transmission, but if I'm thinking about sort of population health, um, I can understand the argument of having to vaccinate um those with higher mortality first.
Right. And, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot with that. I was really thinking your comments to me uh recently or to us recently about your concerns, just from a purely from a pediatrician's standpoint about uh some of the, the challenges that kids are up against with this, uh, the isolation that comes with the hybrid model or the remote models is really taking its toll. Did you?
Oh, absolutely. So um when we think about the COVID pandemic and its impact on children and childhood, its greatest impact has been mental health. Right? Whether it's in our communities that have been very hard hit and you've had children who have been home alone as both parents are in the hospital or whether in communities that haven't been as hard hit but are really um holding on to the social distancing. Um, our children are missing really critical developmental stages. Um, if you think about the early teenager years, it's about trying to figure out who you are apart from your parents. And that's a really hard thing to do when you're not supposed to be mingling with anybody else outside of your household. Um, so the toll on the mental health um is quite substantial and our mental health services are completely tapped.
Pretty much captures it. Thank you very much.
All right. I, I'd love to be able to go back to Lynn because I don't know if she had her questions answered.
So part, part of my question was, when are the educator, when are, when is anyone considered vaccinated? Is it after the first shot or after two? And just trying to get a sense of what level of protection they are going to have when this, the revised schedule kicks in. And part of that question is, I just don't understand the two-shot dynamic. Like, I don't know what the first shot does versus the second and like, how does that all fit into the?
Andrew, I'm happy to take a stab at that. Is that okay?
Absolutely. I, I would only re- repeat what you've told me, Matt.
So what I would say is I think to consider somebody fully vaccinated, which I think is what you're really asking, Lynn, it would be after the second dose. I think if you kind of, when we talked to teachers and did the teacher session, what we talked about is there's some benefit after the first dose, but really for, you know, I think the question we ask ourselves as clinicians is like, when have we approximated the study that gave us the data? It's about a week after the second dose. I think to go back to your first question or your second question, which is like sort of how the two shots work. The basic idea is that in both shots, you're getting the same mRNA. It's being injected into your arm. Your body then uses that as a blueprint to make a COVID protein that it then recognizes is not belonging in your system and you develop an immune response. So if you've never had COVID, the first time your body's seen that protein is when you get your first shot. Most of, most folks will have a kind of um sight discomfort. We've seen that paid people who had COVID and got the first dose tend to get much more symptomatic than people who are COVID naive because their body already knows that protein and that it doesn't belong. So when we send in the blueprint and make it, they really can get a flu-like illness because their body's releasing all the same cited kinds and chemicals to respond as it would to a true infection. For people who are COVID naive, the second time you get it, your body's primed to say these cells, these proteins don't belong here and it's going to generate an immune response. For some people, that's minimally symptomatic. So for me, I, I kind of took a Tylenol and felt a little bit fluid, but was at work and was fine to work. We've had other people who had fevers and were out of work, although that's much less common. In both of those cases, you're essentially building up your body's immune system's ability to recognize this as a foreign protein and to reduce the risk of um having a COVID infection able to establish itself. I think one of the really important pieces that gets a little bit down into the weeds is that when we talk about the vaccines being ninety-five percent effective, what they're measuring for was symptomatic COVID. If we then asked the question of, could I have asymptomatic COVID that my body's been able to knock down, but I still have transmissible virus? And what we know, I think it was from the AstraZeneca trials, but others, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it, it is also effective at doing that, but it's less. So it's about a sixty-six percent reduction as compared to a ninety to ninety-five percent reduction in the effectiveness it knocking out altogether. So even once we're vaccinated, it doesn't mean we couldn't be a carrier and it doesn't mean we couldn't transmit it. It does dramatically reduce the likelihood of having um monitor severe infection, which is defined as needing extra oxygen or being in the hospital, which I think is what people are most worried about. But when we talk about how do we change our social behaviors, even with that vaccine, the protection isn't perfect. And if we're thinking about like, you know, my mom's on chemo, what do I do differently? Certainly, everybody should get the shot, but we should still take precautions, especially while community levels are high. Does that answer your question, Lynn?
Um, maybe and I did, because bottom line, like if I, if I'm an educator, I want to know, you know, uh, when this schedule kicks in, will the schedule kick in after I've gotten both vaccinations or is it going to kick in before I've had my second?
I, I don't think we know that because we don't know when we'll get into fit into that phase of phase two because the state hasn't told us yet. And so thirty-five days after your first dose, assuming that everything is on schedule, you would be fully immunized. But because the state hasn't told us February fifteenth or March first or March fifteenth or April first, it's hard to know that because we don't know when we'll be in that phase yet. If you then, uh, so that's a fully vaccinated question. If it's, when am I starting to get protection from the vaccine? It's about two weeks after the first dose. But I think what you're really asking is about kind of full trial-based protection is day thirty-five.
Right. Um, all right. I wanted to um just mention, I, I see that we have a community member with their hand up and I don't um want to make you feel like I'm ignoring you, but I did just want to share that the way a school community meeting runs is we have community comment at the very beginning of the meeting. And then once that period is done, we close the community comments and move on to presentations and questions from members. So um please do feel free to reach out to one of your school community members if you would like to, you know, get more information following this meeting. All right. Um, next up, Michael.
Uh, thanks, Maggie. Maybe I can defer until last. I have a number of questions, so maybe other members will ask them and and you won't need to hear so much from me.
Sure. Um, anybody else that I have missed that I'm not seeing? Okay.
But you said Anne had some?
Anne did, and um I then she put her hand down. So Anne, are you okay? Or are you all set?
I think.
Yeah, Matt answered my question, uh, addressed my, my question. So thanks, Matt.
No problem. Um, okay. So I also have a few questions. Um, I think you answered my question about in-school spread. Um, but I guess a related question which might um also apply to the elementary school and I'm just trying to get my hands around the particulars. When we have a student who has been in school with COVID, um, what, how many people are quarantined following their exposure? You know, like my kid goes into school, my kids uh in the third grade, they, they have COVID and I, I know I exposed, you know, somebody, people in the class. Who gets quarantined afterwards? Because I'm, I'm not totally clear on that.
So it's folks who are within six feet. So I think this is uh one of our challenges with five and a half foot desks. Everybody, you know, that radius of people is the people who would be included in quarantine. If somebody, so like for my kiddos have a fair amount of school supports. So if they had something where they had one-on-one with PT and had spent a lot of time with that person, they would potentially be in quarantine as well. So it's really anybody who's been within six feet for fifteen minutes or more um would be what triggers the quarantine. The ways that we try to mitigate that is by spacing and static structure. But when Dr. Kio described the contact tracing, that's then the school nurse working with the teacher with the seating chart, kind of mapping out what happened um for kind of inter-staff contacts, identifying with the staff, kind of who is within what distance over what timeframe and that drives it. So you could have one that was four and you could have one that was fifteen, because if this kid was like, oh, I bunched with this one and then I had basketball practice after school and then I had this in class and then this was my particular schedule and how many people I overlapped with and those things could all drive it um and increase the number of close contacts for a given case.
So, so what I'm trying to figure out is just thinking about the secondary school setup versus the elementary school setup. I'm assuming that just on the whole with, in terms of school contacts, that has to be higher because if the kid, you know, was contagious on Monday and Tuesday and they were at school and they went to the six classes they have, like each of those, if they sit in a like, that's like a multiplicative amount of people, right? Am I?
So I think where we've seen giant rises has typically been when it was a case on a team. Because then you're like, this is a huge number of kids.
No, no, no. I, I get that part. What I'm trying to figure out is if we put these middle school and high school kids in school four days a week or more, am, is the impact going to be a larger amount of disruption and learning from our kids? Because statistically, that like, you know, when we get a notice that, you know, the kid said, but there was no in-school contact, I must, and part of that is because five days out of seven, they're not.
Um, well, it's, what I would say is I think that in general, and I think that John probably knows this answer better than I, I think in general, the universe, you, you know, kind of for the classroom, classroom-based exposure at two days or four days, I think it's being exposed to the same subset of peers. I think the difference is what's the likelihood that you're symptomatic in a period of time that you're in school?
That, that's what I'm getting at.
What I would say is I think the overall rate of infection at the high school and middle school is low enough that, you know, sort of for the total number of kid days that we're disrupting there, if that's what we want to chase after, like other things are probably a bigger risk factor than that. I think the delta there is, is probably pretty small. I don't, I don't know that I've got the data to be able to say, is it one point five X? Is it two X? You know, how often is it symptomatic with sort of where people are in the weekends when they get testing or when they get symptoms? Um, I think it definitely is one of the things that can contribute. Honestly, I'd be like, where it's not, I think that the impact of pool testing on disruption will probably be more than the impact of um, the kind of four days in person, just because by identifying this asymptomatic cases, I think we're going to find more cases and have more close contacts. It's still a good thing to do, that's worth doing. But if we sort of look at, as we pull all these different things at once, I think our variance is going to come from the pool testing more than the in-person school, although that's like a gut sense, not something I can give you math on.
Okay. Um, I, my other, um, I have a lot of questions, so I'll try and limit so everyone gets their turn. Um, my other question is, what is our current protocol for following up when we find, when, when say faculty finds out that a family has traveled or, you know, has whatever and the kid's back in school? Like, how are we currently handling that? Um, and, and, and is that effective in terms of what people's, I, I'm, I'm thinking about it partly because February vacation's coming up, but also because April vacation then will come up. And um, I, I just, I, how are we handling that when kids come? That like, when, when it's clear that someone went to say Aruba or something?
Well, so part, part of the problem with that um is that it's not always clear. Believe it or not, people will lie. Hate to say it.
I'm not talking about the people make, like, I'm just talking about like, um, you know, it's, it's like I teach at trade, right? So it's like, you know, we share, like, how was your weekend? So like, when a student says, we just got back from Aruba, like, I'm not talking about like when they don't.
They would be contacted. Those families would be contacted and told, you, 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 you shouldn't be here. You have to, if, if you haven't had a, a negative PCR test, then you have to um stay home.
Okay. So then like, do we get a copy of that or something? Or do people, like, I'm just so curious, like, how, how?
I mean, I think John or Scott can probably answer that better or Barb or uh Deb could probably answer that better than me and, or Jill Fador, but I don't think Jill is with us tonight. I believe the nurses would uh typically call uh, call that family.
It is correct. So in a couple of those cases, the nurse has reached out when we have heard indirectly, typically it's sort of off the cuff and we have um had the nurse or a member of the administration, a couple of cases, reach out to those families, request that they be tested and say that they're out of school until we get um proof of a negative test. You know, we cannot prohibit families from traveling. That is not our lane. But um we can certainly, if we find out that it did happen, to try to ensure safety for our students and our faculty, take steps to communicate with those families to ensure that they are in fact negative upon returning, um, you know, involving quarantining. That's been one of the hard things for us, uh frankly, and that's what's been difficult when we've had um these vacation weeks. Um, I can tell you that the principals dread the following weeks.
But at the same time, I, thank you for that, John. But at the same time, we also are following the lead of our doctors who are suggesting that you not not cancel school the week after because that only encourages more, reinforces, positively reinforces negative behavior. And so we're not going to do that, but it is, it does speak to exactly why I said that about the social contract because I will say with full disclosure, it's not just our families. We've had instances of educators not uh following our protocols. So let's be crystal clear about that. It's incumbent upon all of us. I will share, I was scheduled to go on a nice warm vacation in Aruba, speaking of Aruba, but thought it not wise to come back with a nice bronze tan because that's just not appropriate, right? It's just not. And so we're asking for people's help. We're asking them above all else to follow the travel protocols and to, to honor the protocols that we've put in place. And I think for the most part, people have, I really do. I think that's why our numbers are where they are, but we do have lapses. There's no doubt about it. But I can't emphasize it enough because it's really important.
All right. I just like one more and then I will send it over to Michael. I'm so sorry. Um, we haven't talked at all tonight about the more contagious variant. And I'm just wondering, because that's like on the news every night, if someone can help me understand what that means for schools and the people who work in them all day.
Sure. I'm happy to take a stab at that. Um, so I think that uh there's sort of two main variants that we're hearing about right now. There's the UK variant and there's the South African variant. Um, the South African variant, the concern there is that it appears to have um, a propensity to be able to reinfect previously infected people. And at least for the AstraZeneca vaccine, um, was less effective to a significant degree with that variant. I think there's still some uncertainty around effectiveness with severe disease, which is one of the things we've seen um vary with some of them. And I think that right now we think but don't know that the Moderna and Pfizer covered at least somewhat. I think that the point that the infectious disease doctors at the hospital make is that these are viruses that are basically mutating constantly. And the single best way to handle that is to not allow them the chance to reproduce. And so that aggressive public health strategies around vaccination, um masking. And so that aggressive public health strategies around vaccination, um masking, and those pieces are really important. I think one of the important things when you look at the data, um, and you think about like, oh, this, like, the UK variant, for example, is forty percent more infectious than, say, the kind of general population of various COVID strains. If you assume that you've got a rate of two percent saying, a two percent secondary attack rate, meaning if I have COVID and I'm around a hundred people, two of them would be likely to get COVID. If it's forty percent higher than that, that doesn't mean forty percent of them are now gonna get COVID. It means that almost three people of that hundred will get COVID as opposed to two. So I think it really reinforces the importance of having multiple layers of protection, some of which are kind of pharmacologic in the form of vaccine, but many of which are structural in terms of distancing, uh, mask wearing ventilation and the same strategies we've had. Even with those variants present in those areas, we've still seen decline in, in both Africa and the UK. So it doesn't mean that this is out of control or hopeless, but I do think it reinforces that one, we need to be very aggressive about getting disease rates down, because the next variant will come. And two, as we think long term about vaccination, it's certainly possible and plausible that we'll see vaccine boosters or other solutions to respond to different substrains coming up and having variable properties with the existing vaccines.
Thanks. Um, all right, Michael and then I see Judy afterwards. Ask all the questions, Mike.
Thanks, Maggie. First, maybe a, a public service plea, following Andrew's really referencing so, social contract. Um, I, I would, I was really disappointed to see the, the low uptake of interest on, on pool testing. It is a, a, another layer, an important layer of protection. Um, I would urge um parents to sign their kids up. The educators to sign up for it, please. It protects teachers, it protects students, it also protects your own families, right? Coming back home, so please, you know, let's try to get those, those numbers up. Andrew, you had uh included in the, the slide deck, a request or a request that you'd make that the teachers return after vaccines. First, as a point of order, I think that's something we'll need to take up at the region, because we, we actually had passed an amendment to the re, or the, the reopening plan, we had added an amendment that we would need to consider that ask. And um I would like to discuss that further, because I am concerned about those particular teachers who may have particular risks at home. And there, as far as I know, maybe Matt can speak to it, but I don't think that there is conclusive evidence that the vaccines will substantially reduce the, the infection transmission risk. So maybe that's something we can just take up in a, in a regional school committee meeting, or perhaps in the next joint school committee meeting to address it with respect to, to all staff. The also would like to get into some further detail about the logistics at the region. Perhaps that could be covered at, at our next meeting, um, because there are some, yeah, some really, you know, tricky issues that, that you guys need to contend with. So it's, it's great to hear that there's a plan in place, would like to understand the specifics a, a little bit more. I, I also have a, and I know I've, I've raised this issue, Andrew, with you offline. Um, I am concerned about next winter. I don't think it will be an acceptable place for us to be back in hybrid if from an infection standpoint, we're okay, but from a protocol standpoint, we still need to follow the same protocols. Um, and I think we need to start acting and planning now for next winter, so that we can, as long as we're, we're all, as a community, relatively healthy, we can continue whatever then current plan we're in, whether it's four days a week or five days a week. It, it just would be an unacceptable answer that we don't have any plans for, you know, for cold weather and, and winter months. So I don't know, Andrew, if you want to speak to that at all, or just kind of take in the, the comment?
Well, I, 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 I will say, uh, I will say this. I think perhaps it's just the bandwidth of what we can handle right now. I think people can, we're chunking. You know, we're chunking bad news. Uh, and I did try to point out uh earlier in my question for Dr. Boudreaux or Dr. Vitali, I'm not sure who it was, that we should be wrapping our heads around the idea that these, uh, these uh, health protocols are gonna be in place when we start in the fall, and I think you're probably right, they probably will extend into the winter. Uh, I just think that that's a lot for people to wrap their heads around right at the moment. But I, I do think that it's time for us to start thinking about that, and that's why I added the slide that this is really about preparing for next year. That we, you know, change is hard, but we, we, we need to keep pushing ourselves and, uh, and and simultaneously protecting ourselves, for sure. And um, and, and I think as a system, we've done pretty well in this regard. I think we are ready for the next step. I think that uh we're gonna have to be very careful. And uh, I don't know, I, I, I don't know what you had in mind, Michael, for, in terms of for planning for next year, but I suspect that this summer will include some of that planning that went into the opening this year. And we may have to return our reopening committee to a phase two, sort of like we did with start times.
Yeah, and I, I, I think this summer, or this coming summer is way too late for some potential mitigation strategies, because some strategies may require and involvement, right? So we need to start that now in order to be ready by next winter.
I see. I, I understand what you're talking about. I, I, I forgot that conversation, yes. Yeah, if we were to want to try and make any adjustments to our facilities or anything like that, uh, it's not something you could do in two months before the start of school.
Yeah, be way too late to start at that point. So, uh, final, final question is, or, or request is, um, perhaps I was actually receiving text messages from community members wanting to ask questions. I think the last community forum about kind of COVID issues was, was in the summer, I believe. I, I could be mistaken. Um, but I, I would request that uh their forums are, are held for staff and community members, um, so that people can ask questions that are burning on their minds and, and have those answered and have some, some give and take. That's all I have, thank you.
That's a really good suggestion, Michael, and we, we can definitely do that. And I think it was part of, of what worked for us uh, the first time around with reopening, was allowing people access to us to get these questions answered. This doesn't, isn't the forum necessarily tonight, but that doesn't mean we can't have one. So I like that idea. And hopefully I can corral some of our doctors to participate as well. Which, by the way, uh, I, um, I do want to thank Elise, and now I'm not gonna be able to pronounce her last name, Matt Beaver's uh wife, who came and spoke with our teachers about um, was it the pool testing? Or was it vaccinations? Now I've forgotten.
Vaccination, she was.
Vaccinations, yes. Uh, again, another example of people just giving of themselves to help us out along the way.
All right, um, thank you, Mr. Daffy, and um, thank you for all your questions. You, a lot of questions that I'd never even wanted, like, I needed to ask and never thought of them. Thank you. Um. Judy.
Hi, okay, um. I, I, I assume, I believe that there are still some students who are fully remote. Um, and how will this affect the quality of the learning going back to four days? How will it, it, it affect logistically? And the quality of learning um for the students who are fully remote?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't claim uh that being fully remote has been uh the most has been the ideal model for uh learning, let's put it that way. I've seen the kids who are remoting in, in classes, it's not always perfect. I think it's hard for teachers to juggle two classes essentially at the same time, which some of them do. John perhaps could answer that a little better than I could in terms of of what that will look like. You know, the fact that we allow students to remote in uh has, has been a credit to our teachers. It's hard. I've seen them do it, it's hard work, but I think they've done a, a, an incredible job. John, do you see that as being, or Scott, do you see that as being uh an increased challenge for our teachers?
To some degree, sure. I mean, you're gonna have more students, you know, you'll be teaching more in school, but you will still have a number of students who you'll be instructing remotely. The majority of our teachers already have remote students, so I don't think a lot of that would change. Judy, to answer your question, we have about sixty-eight students currently at the high school who are remote. It's, it's hard to say, you know, the, the, the final impact. I will say some students have done incredibly well. I talked to a remote student the other day, had a long conversation with that student and student is thriving and doing really well. Others have not, um, have struggled. Yet they need to be home for medical reasons and it's been hard for them. So I agree with Dr. Kio, um, remote has not been ideal. But that being said, I think our teachers deserve a ton of credit for the work that they've done, because that is not easy juggling and, and toggling both of those situations and depending upon uh technology, which uh even with the best laid plans, you have to be ready for Plan B, C, and D on a given day.
And that, to hear the stories uh across the state from my colleague, uh, superintendents, about people's entire networks shutting down, I mean, that, uh, in neighboring communities, really disastrous situations. It's, it's a challenge. We weren't built to be as uh, as electronic as we're operating right now. Uh, so I, I, I think we're, we're making do. I've been incredibly impressed with uh some of the things that I've seen teachers do, and especially teachers who are basically running two computers at the same time. It's been a, a big challenge, but they've done well.
The, the middle school will be similar, where we're very similar to the high school. It has been a challenge for our teachers to, to have the remote students when they are in person, but they've handled it and, and I'm sure they'll continue to handle it, but it will be a challenge.
All right.
Remote is not ideal, but.
Judy, was that your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, um, just again, for community members who have their hands up, um, just a reminder that this is a school committee meeting. So our community comments was the very beginning of the meeting, and I do very much encourage folks who want to ask questions directly to reach out to your committee members, any of them that are on this call. Also, um, earlier this evening, we did, um, ask, I believe, Mr. Jaffe asked, uh, Dr. Kio to host a more of a community forum where, where families can have more of their questions answered. So, um, hopefully that will be in the offing. Um, you know, and I just to chime in on Judy's question, that is something that weighs on my mind. Because right now, our remote students, um, you know, twice, once, you know, twice a week, they meet just like everybody else on Zoom. And, you know, the other time, they are really, I mean, I won't say second class distance, but you're the kids in the screen and everybody else is in real life. And um, having had a child whose, whose recent illness, not COVID, um, forced them to be home for a while, those weeks were really, really hard. And it's not on purpose, but you know, the teachers unable to pay attention to the screen people the same way. And, and so I just, even though I understand that the great majority of our families need and want this, I just want people to keep in mind those folks who don't have that option and the impact it will have on them. I wonder whether or not there isn't any investment in technology that we might be able to make. I know there's a thing called an owl camera that like follows the teacher around, so the teacher isn't trying to move the thing around. Or if there are any magical technology solutions that we could look into in the next month or so, that might help with any of this or not. I just am like planting that seed. Um, and then I have one last thing, and then we'll send it over to Angie. Um, seniors, I, I mean, I'm just super sensitive to the seniors, like, I don't know, I'm worried about everybody, but, um, is there any thinking or possibility that, that there could be any? Like, because they leave earlier, whether or not it might be possible if people come in to maybe have them have a little bit earlier time or not, and it might not work. And the other thing is Framingham has put forth a resolution, um, sort of requesting that when we get to phase three for all the people, if it might be possible that they want their seniors in high school to be sort of prioritized, so that they might be able to do like maybe a graduation or something. And I'm just wondering if that's not something we might be able to leverage our AFC relationship with, um, assuming we get through all our teachers and that they do open up to phase three, whether or not we might be able to ask if like, just appointments could be maybe for Elisa seniors. I, maybe this is just thrown out of dream, but I, I just, I feel for these kids. It's, I, 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 I do. Um, and also to Dr. Boudreaux's point, I, I feel for the adults too. I get that the kids are hurting. I have three of them and they are all hurting. Um, the adults are also hurting. And um, I know speaking um as a person who has been in a situation, going to school every day with children in a pandemic, seeing that vaccine move farther and further away while we're in school is, is pretty gut wrenching. Um, and I just want to recognize for especially all of our faculty that's on this call, that feels really bad. And um, and, you know, I know some of our colleagues in other communities haven't been able to go back in person. And sometimes I wonder if this is the governor, you know, spanking us all because of those people, and I don't know. But, um, I just, I do feel like we need to be aware that the adult's mental health is also really hurting and it's really hard for those in a caring profession. And I know by speaking to all the doctors and the people in hospitals, it's really hard. I just take my son to the emergency room and um, his nurse didn't realize that he, you know, was there when she cried and had a breakdown and said, I can't do this anymore, and ran off the floor. Um, it's really hard for all of us. And um, I just want folks to know that. Angie, off to you.
Sherburne, do, does anyone have any questions? Um, and you're gonna have to probably pipe up and, from the Sherburne School Committee to say, because you're not on my screen.
Angie, it's Amanda, I have one.
Okay.
Um, so this is a follow-up um to Maggie's question about the variants. Um, and I guess it's probably a question for our health professionals, but I'm wondering if the new variants change the way we need to think about contact tracing or the various layers of protection we have, um, whether that's distancing or double masking. I'm just wondering about any, are there any additional precautions we can take or should, um, should take in response to these new variants?
I'm happy to take a stab at that to start, but would certainly invite um Matt Carroll, Lexi to chime in as well. You know, what I would say is, I think area where we just don't know yet, I think that there has been discussion of double masking again. All of these things are trade-offs. I think one of the pieces that is also being discussed is having performance standards for the masks that are in the use in the community. I think that's the most likely thing to change independent of the variants, to just identify, these are high performing masks. These are the sort of test characteristics of them. We had a pragmatic solution that includes lots of homemade or Etsy made masks. And it may be that we'll see evolution around that with time, both as availability improves and as we get um performance standards for those masks, I think that may change independent of the variants. I think from the variant standpoint, um, I don't think there's any change around contact tracing. I think when they talk about it being more transmissible, it's essentially of the people who are traditionally defined as a close contact. I would also emphasize the variants we have now are two variants. There are likely many others that we don't know about or that will continue to evolve. So this could change as other variants develop. And so it's sort of an answer for today, but the shelf life, this is like butter at a picnic, like it ain't long. So I think it's, it's good advice for now, but we're learning more especially about the variants um every day.
Thank you.
Megan, I see you have your hand up.
I was, uh, I wanted to ask about the cleaning practices at Pine Hill and at the elementary schools. I guess if we're talking about bringing elementary school kids back five days a week. You know, how, how will that be? Is the Wednesday deep clean no longer necessary? Or do we have other processes in place that are adequate?
Is somewhat, I've been, been hearing, uh, Megan, uh, the, the level of concern around uh the high touch surfaces does not seem to be as significant as it was. I've had some conversations with our health and hygiene folks about that. And so I think that we're not as, you know, we're not in the same place we were in August when we were, or even July, when we were building our schedules. I think we still feel as if we need to clean the buildings and that we need to allow our teachers access to cleaning supplies, but that we don't necessarily have to empty out the buildings in order to completely clear the air. Because remember, we also did a lot of work with our ventilation systems and putting, in the case of Pine Hill, putting the air filtration units in the classrooms. So some of those things we feel like have rendered that piece not as important. That's not to say it's not important, but not as important as it, we're not feeling that same kind of pressure that we were.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And so I was just going to add on a question about the pool testing that we're encouraging people to do. Even after there are vaccinations that have occurred, are we still going to be doing the pool testing? Because there could be cases perhaps in between the vaccination, the first and the second, or with the virus mutation, will that still be something that we are going to try to continue to do?
Yeah, I think we're in the pool testing for the school year for sure, and potentially next, depending on what's going on with vaccinations for kids. Right now, sixteen and over, Matt, is considered eligible when, once that phase hits?
Yeah, I think Alexi knows more than I, but my understanding is that UA extends to age sixteen, but kids under sixteen can't get the vaccine right now, and that will be the trials that Alexi was describing that have completed enrollment or depending on the vaccine are finishing enrollment now, that we won't have results on those till later in the fall potentially.
Right, so you know, I think that the pool testing, we, it would, once we get it established, I mean, but probably the biggest challenge of the pool testing is getting it established. Once it's established, we feel confident that it won't be too too bad or too cumbersome. The yeah, I mean, the fall, in terms of pool testing, a lot depends on where our kids are in terms of vaccinations. But as Matt pointed out, this is about catching, especially catching asymptomatic folks. And if our staff is fully vaccinated, but our students are not, we still care about catching those who are symptomatic.
Right, so, Dr. Kio, is there anything else about your next stages of reopening that you want to present?
No, I just want to just very quickly take a minute to, again, thank all the people who I've had conversations with over the past week or so. We've, there's a lot of behinds, behind the scenes work that goes on to make these things happen. I can't make these decisions in isolation. There is a ripple effect to pretty much any move you make. And so the fact that we're even having this conversation is a credit, especially to our administrators who, again, have a can do attitude. I don't know who sent me the article. It may have been Mr. Jaffe, but somebody sent me an article a while back about the schools that have been able to have more in in person learning and what what characteristics the folks in those schools had. And and number one, one amongst them was the leaders especially had a can do attitude. Obviously, the leaders are only as good as the people around them. So the teachers obviously have had a can do attitude. And we've, we've made it this far, thanks to our people. And we do believe we can go to the next level. By the way, we're, it's been brought to my attention, people have said in the past, well, are we the only, like, we trailblazers or something? Are we the only ones who are going to be willing to do this? And the answer is no. A lot of my colleagues in the Tri Valley League are trying to do the same thing, go to four or five days back in early April. So we're right around the same timeline. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, all of our doctors, and especially our nurses. The, a lot of unsung heroes made all of this happen, keeping our kids and staff safe.
Dr. Kio, can I just add one comment?
Yeah.
So I was forwarded, there's this, I'm sure it's familiar to everybody, but there's this great Mr. Rogers quote about look for the helpers. And I think that our number one job in all of this is to sort of look for that, like, our goal is to have lots of helpers and no heroes. Because heroes are people you ask to do things that you wouldn't want to do. And I think helpers are the people who, when faced with a crisis, are stepping in and working towards those solutions. And I think as a district, we're incredibly lucky for the helpers, whether it's us on the health and hygiene group, or the parents and families that have volunteered to help, or the school committees that have been kind of in the middle of this in a really hard way, that's not like education's totally your wheelhouse, and this is not what the gig was when you signed up. And our teachers and our teacher leaders and our nurses, and like, there is such a ridiculous number of helpers that are so much part of this. But I think really separating that out from heroes, because we shouldn't be asking anybody to be going into a burning building. And I think that's part of what we try to think about every time we're in the health and hygiene is like, what's reasonable, what's safe? And I just want to assure both the families and the teachers on the call, like, that's, that's what we're shooting for is we don't want a single hero. We want lots of helpers. And I just want to reinforce that and then also to invite people. We do have this as a standing agenda item on the Board of Health meeting. So if people have questions or things that they want to communicate, the Board of Health level, they're certainly welcome to attend our meetings, and it's a standing agenda item first and third Wednesdays.
I just want to interject. Thank you, Matt. That was very well said. And I have also attended a couple of those Board of Health meetings, and they're very informative, so I would, I would encourage anyone to do so.
With that being said, Lynn, I think you have a question. Your hand is up.
Yeah, just one quick. Is there a plan to, or have you, have you worked through Dr. Kio, the reconvening, the MOU group?
Yeah.
Changes have you?
I'm sorry, Lynn, I cut you off. I apologize. Go ahead. Yes. Yeah, no, there, there, I have had a conversation with Laura McGovern just about that feeling as if it might, in fact, I know it makes sense to go back because one of the things that we're supposed to, we've committed to, to our staff is to return for discussion if we plan to expand the reopening. And there are a few other things that we we would like to process, and I'm sure that the teachers have on their minds as well, so. And that may in fact speak to some of the concerns that Mr. Jaffe Rose raised, so. Yeah, this is a work in progress. I think we've given ourselves enough of a runway to get this done and to get it done right. But, you know, that doesn't mean we could sit back. We need to get going like now. Some of these things have to be addressed soon. So, yeah.
So if you're a member of the community at large, please send any questions to your representatives on the school committees, and they can give an answer for you. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So I think we can move by unanimous consent. I was going to say, let's just second everybody, raise their hand. Judy, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.